Public hearing of the evening, which is Preservation of Significant Structures Ordinance. Diana.
Good evening, Commissioners. Yes, this is the Recommended Revised New and Improved Preservation of Significant Structures Ordinance. Emeryville already has an ordinance on preservation of significant structures. It applies to non-residential and mixed-use structures because there's a different ordinance about preservation of residential structures. And what we're doing, recommending here, is adding a map and list so we know which ones they are. And also clarifying and tightening the criteria. We had quite an experience trying to make the list using the criteria, and we devised some rules so we could decide which were which. And also, in the meantime, the council has expressed an opinion on a couple of structures that who decided this was historic? Who decided this was a significant structure? We don't think so. So, we sort of revised the criteria a couple, a little bit, and responded to that. And we're also combining it with the Park Avenue District, which already has a map of significant structures. So, it doesn't really change anything about that. It just makes the code more succinct. So, here are the criteria with the revisions. I can't do, strike out and underline in PowerPoint, so I'll try to tell you what we changed. The criteria are: A significant structure is one that's 50 years old and meets one of the following criteria. Either it's a prominent structure that's emblematic of Emeryville and important to the history of Emeryville, or, whoops, wrong way. It has five of the following features in its street facade. Predominantly brick, we added except windows and doors. The windows and doors, including roll-ups, we added that, covering at least 30 percent of the street facade, including the ground floor. We added that part. Whoops, not yet. I'm sorry.
There you go.
Symmetry or repetitive rhythm, as defined by window and door openings on most of a facade. I think we added a few words to that. Multi-pane windows, at least half of the area of the windows having panes measuring no more than one and a half by three feet. And there, we added the word "area," and we reduced the size of the windows, so we really are talking about these industrial windows like you see in that picture. And window sills protruding, and we added two inches. And roof line with varied heights or angled or curved shapes at the street front, because there's some buildings that have them, but they're not really visible. And decorative bar relief, concrete inlays, ironwork, tiles, stained glass, or other decorative features. That one didn't change. Walls with columns or curves, and walls with complex cornices, we added six inches or wider, what is a cornice, and took out some architectural jargon. Varied artistic patterns in the predominant cladding material. Added the word "artistic" because we have some buildings where the cladding material varies because things have been added on or covered up, and that's not very artistic at all. And also arch or angle over the major entrance. And then we are proposing to delete two criteria. One is about wide-window frames, and they tend to happen on the wood, the old wood houses that are in industrial areas and in industrial use that the council doesn't seem to be interested in protecting. And major entrance on the street, we're deleting because it's just not very, most structures have that, and it doesn't really distinguish them. So, here's the map. The gold are the significant structures. The blue are only significant under the existing criteria, not the proposed ones. And then the green is just taking the Park Avenue map and sticking it onto this map. So, here they are. The building that has the prizefighter in it, three industrial buildings on 67th, each of which has something special, some special things about it. An office conversion on 66th, Emery Tech, Jellybean Square, Hollis Street Complex, the building behind Christie Ave. Commons, one of the buildings at the public market, Heritage Square, just the bend-to-office part of that block, the monthly building, Siegel and Strain Office, this house that was built in 1906, the townhouse, Radcliffe Offices, the yellow brick building on Powell, the Apex Building, the Zentner Building, two other buildings on Horton next to it, and the building between Hariff and the Powell Street Bridge, and the building on the Paper Mill site that is going to have its facade kept. These footnotes, these are the buildings that, they don't meet the, they meet the first set of criteria, emblematic of Emeryville, not the other ones. And then the ones with asterisks, well, this one's been approved for demolition, but they're going to keep that facade. Okay. And then the water tower, the two buildings between Powell and Stanford that have been revised, renovated recently, the PRC Building, the Doyle Street Cafe, and the building across the street, the Thoroughbred Building, Pickle Works, the Shell Building, there's the Shell, the Emeryville Business Center, and Pixar formerly Semifredi, and a series of retail buildings on San Pablo Avenue between 45th and 43rd. The Senior Center, Nation, the one that used to have National written on it, the Bank Building, and these two buildings are on, this one building is on two different parcels. They actually were built at different times. And the Great Stock Building, the Maas Building, the building with the ironwork, and a mixed-use building on San Pablo Avenue. So, those are the proposed significant buildings. Now, these are the buildings that would also be significant under the current criteria. Two of the buildings on 67th are a little bit more plain. They don't have as much lay of features as the others. And the McGrath Steel Buildings, Roller Press, McLaughlin Coffee, the Dog Daycare House, the building with the Inca floats in it, and Title IX Building, the Hollis 59th Building, the building next to the Corporation Yard parking lot, the building that was demolished earlier this week. This was the source of the rule about the windows having to be on the ground floor. The planer of the buildings on San Pablo Avenue, a storage building on 42nd, and a vacant retail building at 36th and San Pablo. And I would like to describe a couple of comments that we've received. I hope the letters are on your dais. One was from Andrew Getz, and he happened to be in the building today, so I talked to him, and he said, "Well, that letter doesn't quite have the tone I meant to have because I dashed it off in a hurry, but what I'm really concerned about is this ordinance could make it hard to get financing to build more densely in Emeryville, and that's what we need to do since we're at the heart of the Bay Area." He wasn't really concerned about his own buildings because he's not going to be developing them soon, but he kind of felt like he wanted to represent developers in Emeryville. But as far as financing, staff has to point out that there are several new, several significant buildings that are being developed, and they may have had trouble getting financing, but we haven't heard of it being because of that. He also said it is hard to build behind a facade, and that's something that people often are asked to do. We do have some examples where that has been done. One is 1401 Park, and also City Limits, and now Paper Mill. The other letter is from Jeff Sears. I will add the address you mentioned to the address page. He is correct that there is a wrong dot in the first box about brick. It's obviously not a brick building. Oh, I wanted to go back and show you what we're talking about here. All right, we'll do it this way. There, this one. Here, the one that says Rubies. He says that the symmetry and repetition in this building are only here, and so only this building should be significant. So, that's two different issues. One is, I think that this Hollis Street facade is symmetric. It has three pairs of windows on the left and four on the right, and that at least repetition is on that street, and also, I think, all the way down 62nd and 63rd, even though the window styles do change kind of halfway down the block. And as far as the different buildings, they do function, they have different tenants, but they function as one building aesthetically, and if you walk down the street and look where the roof changes, where the window style changes, you don't really see a seam in the building. So, I would argue that the whole thing is significant, and it's all one thing. Decorative features, now, this, I think of this as a bar relief, or at least some sort of decorative feature. And I called these columns. If you don't call them columns, then we're down to five, which is still significant. Yeah, that's about all I wanted to say about that. So, that concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions and respond to any comments.
Let me just add one thing to what Diana has said, which is that, maybe you said this, I didn't hear you say it. We did notify the owners of all of the buildings on this list about tonight's meeting, which is how Mr. Getz and Mr. Sears knew about it and sent us these letters. As far as I know, we haven't heard from anybody else.
Right, and we also notified the tenants.
Maybe one of the things that would be helpful, just for the public that might be listening, is what does this mean in terms of procedures, if it's a historic building?
Oh, yes, I'm only talking about the amendments. I didn't give you the background of what the ordinance says. If your building meets these criteria, if it's listed as a significant structure, then if you're demolishing, see if I have this right, if you're demolishing part of it, just a small part, then you have to get planning commission approval. And if you're demolishing more than 75 percent, you have to get council approval. And along with that approval is, if it's the 75 percent, is approval of the replacement structure. Now, yeah, yeah. I'm getting my, my current and new zoning ordinance is confused in my mind.
So, up to 75 percent, you would only need?
Planning Commission.
Commission, Planning Commission, yeah.
Is that right, Charlie?
I'm not sure about that, but over 75 percent definitely needs city council approval. This ordinance is going to be carried forward into the new regulations. In fact, this draft has been included in the, in the draft planning regulations. Obviously, it will be modified in whatever form it finally ends up being adopted. You know, the new planning regulations will reflect that. But the new planning regulations have something that our current regulations don't have, which is a provision for a minor conditional use permit. That's a staff-level approval. So, in the new regulations, if the building is to be preserved and reused, and the significant features are to be retained, you can still demolish a portion of it as long as the significant parts of it are retained with a minor conditional use permit. And if you're going to demolish 75 percent or more, then that requires council approval. So, this ordinance does not have that provision about the minor conditional use permit because obviously we don't have that tool yet. But it does have the provision about 75 percent or more demolition requires council approval.
That's why you need planning commission approval, because we don't have the minor yet.
So, will that be amended later?
So, with the new zoning ordinance, it would be staff level. If it's just, if it doesn't really, because people come in and they want to change a window, or something like that.
Well, I think a good example would be the city storage building at 40th and Adeline that you all approved, a use permit for storage, and that's a significant building, and this would be, it would be a preservation or reuse of that. Under the new planning regulations, that would still require commission approval because of the use permit for the use. We kind of made a judgment call that even though technically that's a demolition, because they're demolishing some little piece of that building, certainly not the whole thing, certainly hardly any of it, but they're demolishing a little bit of it, and under the current code, technically, that probably requires council approval. But we made the judgment call that the commission could approve it as a rehab and a reuse, and that's the intent of this, is to encourage more of that kind of thing and to discourage the wholesale demolition of these buildings.
Because we don't want them to just sit vacant because people are afraid to touch Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question. So, can we, can we set the Wayback Machine to 2006 for a second? I have a question. I want to, can you give us some background on kind of how the criteria were originally developed?
The background, the situation was, there was a ballot amendment happening that would limit what the city could do in terms of ordinances, so we adopted a few ordinances really fast. And in that context, there, well, we had a new council member especially, who's not on the council anymore, who really was interested in preserving special buildings, and I guess there was a consensus about that. So, I just went around and looked at all the special old buildings and just tried to figure out what was special about them, and listed physically their characteristics. And it's pretty much the characteristics of the best of the early 20th century industrial buildings. It's kind of place-specific.
And maybe, if I could embellish on that a little bit, there's precedent for this in the Park Avenue District Plan, which was adopted about 2006 also, I think. But there was a previous version of the plan that had never actually been adopted, and it included a map and list of significant buildings in the Park Avenue District. That was done by a consultant, and he never really told us what his criteria were. He just listed a bunch of significant buildings, and the city and planning commission and council at the time agreed that they were significant without any specific criteria. That was in the 90s. That was before the plan had ever actually been adopted. It was drafted but not adopted. Then, in the early 2000s, the Park Avenue District Committee was formed, and the district was expanded to include the area between Hollis Street and San Pablo Avenue that hadn't been in the district before. And staff needed to survey that area and see what buildings in that area seemed to be significant to add to the Park Avenue District Plan. In order to do that, we kind of had to go back and look at the buildings that had already been designated significant and figure out what it was about them that made them significant. So, we came up with a list of criteria as a part of the Park Avenue District, and as a result, designated a bunch of buildings, you know, towards San Pablo also as significant structures. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Diana, but I think that list was kind of the impetus for then this list going forward.
Even though they're not exactly the same list?
Not exactly the same criteria?
Right.
Yeah, but they're pretty close.
So, the Park Avenue specific plan, then, the version that was adopted, does have some list of criteria that it used to identify the significant structures? I mean, it might be.
I don't believe the criteria are actually in the plan.
It's just a map of buildings.
Okay.
It looks to me like any brick building was automatically saved, and none were excluded.
Actually, well, actually, in the existing criteria, that's almost true. We are proposing some criteria that would tighten it up a little, and the really plain ones are, would fall off.
I mean, this building right behind us here is an example.
Oh, in the Park Avenue District?
Yeah.
Yes, mhm.
The nothing building, but it's to be saved because it's brick.
Well, and you'll notice the Pixar building across the street is all brick because it's trying to mimic the Park Avenue District.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Are there public?
Question.
Oh, actually, yeah, of staff. Diana.
Question for you, like on the McLaughlin Coffee Building.
Mhm.
That's a brick building, and it was one that was on the list that fell off the list. And, you know, I think, I walked around to all the buildings that were falling off the list, and most of them was like, "Yeah, that's pretty clear, and the criteria, I think, are really good. I think you really came up with something that's, that's pretty workable." That one was a little bit borderline for me, so if somebody wanted to come in and say just demolish that building and put something different in its place, we don't really have anything that can prevent that?
Not if we, not if we adopt these new criteria. I was going to find it and show, but I think it would take too long. Yeah, that is a building that I think, looks to me like it was built in like the 60s or something, and it's not really the same style as the early 20th century building. I remember when I was walking around with Jim Adams from Roma, when we were doing the North Hollis Plan, and we were talking about special buildings, and I said, "Oh, I really liked that building." He said, "You like that building?" I thought, "Well, he guess probably knows better." But it's a little more plain, a little more modern, and that's why it kind of leaned off. But you can say if you would like to put it back on, we can do that.
What letter is that building on the sheet that we have?
F.
F, okay, that's what I thought.
What letter does somebody know?
I think it's F.
F, yeah.
Okay, I can find this.
And it was one of those that, it's like, I like the building, and it's like, I walk by it, and I like it, but I, you know, looking at the criteria, it doesn't fit, and I can see why it doesn't fit.
It is brick, it does have a lot of windows. Oh, one thing about it is the windows aren't very, the mullions are together, it's small panes, but the window openings are not really as big as the earlier style. There's a lot of brick above them.
Right, there's a lot of brick above, and that's probably what sets it apart. If it had, if the windows were taller, it would probably meet the criteria. I think in this whole thing, that's the only building that, that I had a little, I don't know about.
Anybody else want to save that one, move it on to the keep list?
Well, let's hear from the public before we make too many comments on that.
Okay, sorry. That's all the questions for staff.
I had one question about the last one on San Pablo Avenue, the O. Building. I haven't walked over there to take a close look at it. It looks like it's had a lot of cladding put on it. Do we know what's underneath it? Is there anything like decorative underneath it, or that could be a hidden gem?
Good question. I don't know. That's one that staff went back and forth about, because it, it doesn't look like much right now, that's for sure. And as you can tell by the error that's in the staff report, which will get fixed before council, it has a lot of dots in it, and those dots were removed, should have been removed because the new criteria, it doesn't meet two of them, and one of them is, probably shouldn't meet. Specifically. The multi-pane window size was changed, so those dropped out, and it's our, it's not an artistic variation in the cladding material, and it's really not predominantly brick. So, those are the kinds of deliberations we had to go through, which leads me to say, that's why we want to have a list and map.
Yeah, and there is a little bit of decorative, right at the top, under the roofline cornice, there's a little, you can, kind of peeking out.
It makes you wonder what's underneath.
Is that building empty?
Yes, it's vacant.
Any more questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so if there are any members of the public that wish to speak, please come up.
Hannah Bukowski, speaking for Emeryville Property Owners Association. There's a couple of things about this that I would have some questions about. There's nothing in here about economics. I mean, that is a factor in almost all these cases. And what about the existing conditions of some of these buildings? I mean, some of these owners may have allowed them to deteriorate to the point where they're not feasible to replace them. I think that should be considered. Replacement structure would feature design quality that is as high or higher than the structure to be demolished. Well, they don't make buildings like they used to. I don't see too many new buildings that would meet that criteria. And Charlie, you say you notified all the people that have these buildings?
Correct.
I spoke to a couple of people on this list that didn't know anything about it, but how did you notify them? Just send them a card, or?
We sent them the agenda to their mailing address as indicated by the assessor.
Okay. And then, you know, one of the things about the plan is, you know, we didn't know redevelopment was going to end, and I don't think the economics of the general plan has been really adequately considered. I mean, are we going to have enough money to provide the services we need? And a lot of restrictions in these buildings may impair that. And then, there's a lot of buildings on here that I don't think are significant. The Maas Building doesn't look significant to me, nor the building where Ruby's Cafe is. That just doesn't seem very significant, but I guess that's all personal judgment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Al DeGroot, representing Novartis Vaccines and Diagnostics, and I did want to address a couple of comments on notice to all the building owners. Speaking for myself, I was actually notified via phone call from another property owner that said, "Guess what, your building's on the list. Did you know that?" Searching through the mail system through Novartis, found a notification, but the notification was actually for the agenda, but didn't specifically qualify that that property's buildings had been included within the list. So, I'm sure many property owners may have in fact said, "There's a nice, there's a meeting today about specifically significant buildings," but may not have made that tie that that involved their particular property, as it was not clear to the initial recipient within our company. Okay. I actually would like to ask a question of this, because I'm rather a novice in the process of the system. So, the, under the, the agenda item, it speaks to a consideration of the ordinance, but I'm not clear what the outcome of today's discussion would be. Is this approval to move it further through the process, or is this just a discussion period that continues on? If I can get some clarification, it'd be helpful.
Charlie, is it, is it my understanding that this, we would move it?
Yes, this is the public hearing for the planning commission. The planning commission will make a recommendation to the city council. I believe this is scheduled for the city council's November 20th meeting. Is that right, Diana? And that would be first reading of the ordinance. If they pass it, then the final reading would be the next meeting, which would be the first Tuesday in December.
Okay.
And then it would take effect 30 days after that.
Okay. Then I would present the fact that, in consideration that the planning staff report was issued a week ago, leaving many of the property owners at maximum five working days to review the ordinance and perhaps an impact, that there'd be additional time granted for engagement with those property owners to determine if there's any potential impact or review qualification. In the instance of Novartis property, which is actually number 33 on your list of 4560 Horton, I would argue that, specific points on that, I would actually say it falls below the threshold, but would love to engage in that discussion, but would need additional time to do that with planning staff. Welcome that opportunity to do just that. I also believe that in a very brief review, admittedly, there is a section or two that I would suggest that wording can be tightened up. It's a bit ambiguous at times. Am I done?
Just finish up.
Finish up, thank you. Specifically, in a couple of sections, nine dash, 4.67 dash, or point six, excuse me, findings for approval of definition. It really bounces around, and I think that if you're very, very familiar to read this ordinance, often maybe that makes some sense, but it talks about a structure based on all of the following criteria, where the line above that, it talks about if only one or more of the criteria are applied. So, I think that some people, that may be very clear to me it was not, and I think that there, again, insufficient time for me to review the entire ordinance, but I'd like that opportunity to do so. And I should have started very clearly with saying, "We're fully supportive of the intent. Anything we can do to clarify the requirements and state well in advance the condition of the facilities and the status of the facilities, and we welcome and would support that wholly. We just really would like additional time to be able to review the ordinance and the impact to our property and the evaluation performed by staff of our property."
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
I have a question on that one, specifically on building number 33. It's got its asterisk saying demolition was previously approved. Does that, is that an approval that still holds water?
Yes, and I would like to respond actually to a couple of points that each of those commenters made, if I may. First, to that point, you'll know, you'll notice that there are a number of buildings, about four or five, that are on this list that have an asterisk that says demolition previously approved by city council as part of a planning entitlement. In the case of the Novartis building, that building is within the Novartis, or the Chiron PUD that was approved in the 1990s, which calls for completely new construction throughout the entire Chiron campus, and obviously involving the demolition of all existing buildings, including this one. So, So in this case, the building is still standing, but we, it's noted that its demolition has already been approved by the city council as part of that PUD. So they don't need to come back to the council for another approval to demolish it. It's already been, that's already been approved. Same thing for the Pixar-owned, former Semi-Freddy's building at 45th and Hollis. The demolition of that building likewise has already been approved. And then there are a couple of buildings that planning approval has been granted for projects that have not moved forward because of the economy, but the planning approvals are still valid. One is the, the bill, actually, I guess it's listed as two buildings, at 39th and Adeline. There is an approved residential project there, and the city council has already approved the demolition of those buildings under this ordinance. But the buildings are still there, because they haven't gotten around to demolishing them yet. So we put them on the list, but we have that asterisk next to them. And also, actually, when this was prepared, the paper mill site, they hadn't started the demolition work there yet, but the brick building is what, they're going to be retaining two walls of it. That's shown as a significant building on this map, and there's an asterisk next to that as well.
Well, why did you put them on the map if demolition has been approved?
There is a possibility in the future that will, not for the paper mill building, but for the other buildings, there's a possibility in the future that those planning entitlements could lapse, and if they did, then-
Building 43 is particularly ugly, unattractive building, and I don't see how it even meets the criteria to put it on the map at all.
Well, the city council previously determined that it was significant, because they approved its demolition as a significant building. There is a little wrinkle in this. You may recall the Golden Gate Lock and Key building, which is no longer with us, was deemed a significant building, and its demolition was approved by the city council in conjunction with the proposed Sidowitz building, is about a 94 unit, I think, kind of glass and aluminum box building that everybody was excited about. And then that project, you know, went belly up and never ended up happening, and the Golden Gate Lock and Key building was still there, and the planning entitlement expired. And therefore, the approval to demolish that building expired, and the city ended up owning the property, and the city decided that we should demolish that building, because it was a maintenance headache and we were going to use it for a housing site, but the permission from the council to demolish it had expired. We had to go back and amend the ordinance, as you may recall, to add a criteria about if it's in the public interest to demolish the building, then that's allowed. And after that was approved, after that ordinance change was made, the council then approved its demolition, and we, the city then went out and demolished it.
I just don't understand how it got on the list in the first place, because it was a derelict building all the way along, unoccupied, falling apart, and yet it was dame, it was made significant.
Well, that's sort of why this is before you tonight, is for you all to weigh in on all of these and tell us if you think they belong on the list or not. Again, the one with the asterisks have already been approved for demolition. They're only on the list just in case those planning entitlements should ever lapse, and we need to be reminded that those are significant. I also want to just point out to the commission that most of this ordinance that's before you already exists. What we're doing is we're adding the map and the list of the buildings. Everything else in this ordinance is pretty much already on the books, including the findings that Mr. DeGroot found confusing. Those are already in the municipal code. We're just bringing them forward, and the ands or ors may not seem to make sense if you just, if you read it quickly, but it actually does make sense. It's sort of a either this, or this, and this, and this kind of thing. I mean, you have to read it to see what it's about, but, yeah. So I just wanted to mention that a lot of this is not new, and most of these buildings would be subject to this ordinance whether they were put on this map and list or not. It's just that they would be coming forward to the commission and council on a case-by-case basis, and you'd have to evaluate every one of them individually as it came forward for a planning entitlement, as we have been doing for the last six years. And we have had about five or six of projects involving demolition of these significant buildings that have gone through the process and have been approved, or in the case of the city storage building, has been a rehab of it. We're just trying to bring a little more certainty to everybody by telling everybody exactly which buildings we're talking about.
Chair, before perhaps we go into further discussion, if, I'm not sure you closed the public hearing yet.
I think there's one more person who'd like to speak, and I was just about to say that. Yes, please come forward.
Hi, I actually didn't even know about this. I just came to see what a meeting was like. And I just wanted to find out whether they've, the commission or committee has taken into consideration the whole of the architectural style of the building, because actually, there's several Art Deco buildings in Emeryville, and I, I think, I mean, I'm no architect, I'm an artist, but the number eight, the Hollis Street building, I think it's important of the relationship of that, that part to the whole of the building, and also when you look at it going down 62nd and 63rd. So it might be useful also, and I think I noticed some others, especially ones that aren't brick, seem to be significantly Art Deco in the entirety. So I would recommend possibly looking at it as it wraps around 62nd and 63rd, because the entrance on 62nd also has those, those kinds of lines.
Thank you. Are there any further comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment.
Well, I take exception to a number of buildings that are on this list that I don't think are architectural significance. I was an architect for 50-plus years, and I think I have a reasonable eye about some of this stuff, and I don't think you can qualify good architecture by saying it has X number of windows, and they're so far off the street, and it's built out of brick. You know, I take exception particularly to the number 40, which is of no significance at all. I'm glad it's going to be saved for, I hope, for a storage building, but other than that, it just, other than if you love red brick and we got to save red brick, I don't see anything of value at all to it. Building 46 and 47, I think are, 47 particularly, is just a three, an old three-story apartment building with some sort of temporary facade on the ground floor. Building 46 is just an old storefront building. You know, building 45, on the other hand, is a great building. Yet we're sort of combining them all together as something special, and I think that's, that's crazy. Just because it's brick doesn't make it, unless we feel we have to save brick buildings because they're brick. I just, I think that there's too much on it. Again, I would look at 20, 21, and 22. 20's not bad. 21 is just an old warehouse, and 22 is another old warehouse. You know, I don't think there's, you know, if we want Emeryville to grow and get better, I think that saving these is crazy. Now, I realize they don't have to be saved. Somebody can appeal it to the city council, and they can agree to tear it down. But why, why do we have to put these stumbling blocks in place? The other issues I have are 37 and 38 on San Pablo, 36 actually, 37 and 38. Again, they're just little old buildings, and I don't know why we have to say they're Anyway, that's my comment.
Well, I think the proposed ordinance brings some clarity to an ordinance that's fuzzy right now, and I think that even if some of these buildings might not be the most wonderful architectural specimens around, collectively, they give a character to Emeryville that I think is worth recognizing. The ordinance says that the proposed ordinance and the existing ordinance give reasons and criteria that these buildings could be demolished or could be changed, including an economic consideration, and I would support the ordinance. I actually, I'm curious about the building number, the building O on San Pablo Avenue, although in its state right there, it doesn't look good at all, but it's, it's sort of intriguing. But I would support the ordinance as proposed.
I have a couple of additional questions for staff. So the, Diana, you mentioned the, the change in the criteria about the columns, which I'm trying to find right now.
I deleted vertical and horizontal articulation.
Or, well, in our copy, it just says horizontal articulation.
Okay.
Such as columns. And I'm just curious why that phrase was taken out, because on the, on the face of it, it seems like, well, I mean, honestly, I don't, I don't know that I would call any of these things, I mean, they're kind of, they're vertical facade elements. I don't know that I would call any of them columns. So to say horizontal articulation such as columns, it kind of, I think it better kind of articulates what you're actually going after. So I'm just kind of curious about the background on that.
Well, in the process of several staff members coming out and trying to make the same ratings of the buildings and list the same criteria as whether they meet them or not, I was just reducing it to what a ministerial person could definitely say it is, but you make a really interesting point. Thank you.
And then my, my other question is, so the Park Avenue plan, from, from what I understand, contains a list of significant structures that was originally kind of developed through, with, with a consultant, but then which later on, staff kind of developed some criteria to add to it, but the criteria aren't published in the plan. So is that, could this ordinance do away, I mean, could, could the criteria be deleted from this ordinance and, and only the, the list of structures included? Is that, I mean, I think that's kind of a question for the city attorney, maybe, but...
I'm sorry, could you, could you repeat that?
So the, so my understanding of the Park Avenue specific plan is that it, it contains a list of structures, but no criteria to go along with them, because they were, they were originally developed with, with the aid of a consultant, but then later on, staff developed some criteria to add additional structures to the plan when the, when the plan boundary was expanded. And the plan that was adopted doesn't have a list of criteria, it just has a map of significant structures that was adopted, and then that's now getting incorporated into this ordinance that are merging the two. So my question is, could, could the whole ordinance, the rest of the city, do the same thing and not have, not have the criteria in the ordinance, but only have the list?
In this, in this ordinance?
Yes.
It's possible, yes. The, I mean, it would, what you would require then is that if, if that was what the city, if that's what the planning commission, you know, would like to see, then what you would be required, what would need to happen then is that we would, you know, staff would be directed, could be directed to bring another, you know, essentially another version of this ordinance to you, if, if that was the direction of the commission, because, you know, what's before you tonight. In order to move that suggestion forward, what you have, what we have to do is essentially redraft what's before you tonight, or you can vote on this version before you to the, to the city council. But to answer your question, it is possible to draft it that way. Staff, the staff recommendation was not to do so, which is why we have produced the version before you tonight.
Let me just clarify also, I'm just looking at the Park Avenue district plan, and actually it does mention the criteria, not, not like point by point, but it says, "The tier-one buildings of highest value are mostly turn-of-the-century brick and concrete factory buildings. Tier-two buildings of moderate value are mostly newer concrete structures. The architectural value of the tier-one and tier-two buildings lies in their distinctive style. They are made of brick or concrete building materials. They have a high level of symmetry, demonstrated in repetitive bays, gables, windows, and doors, and they are highly articulated in horizontal as well as vertical elements." And it just, and it kind of goes on, talks about front entrances, ample window areas, open floor plans, et cetera, et cetera. So it gives some indication of what the factors were that were taken into account.
I think it's useful to have the criteria there, because part of what we are supposed to be, or the council would be looking at when they're deciding whether it's worth demolishing and replacing, is sort of how significant it is, and having the criteria that allows you to say, "Oh, this met every single criteria for a significant building. You might have a higher standard for what it would be replaced with than if it just is sort of a borderline situation." I think it's, I think it's useful guidance.
I think that was staff's feeling.
Yeah, and I, I wanted to second that and say I was actually, I thought it was a very thorough and good chart that you made with, and I'm sure it was quite difficult just coming up with this on your own, and I, although I, I understand, Buzz, how you feel about some of these structures, I think Emeryville has few to choose from. And with that being said, I would like to see some of our older structures preserved as significant, and it does not mean that they can't be demolished, it's just an added, an added precaution to make sure that the, whatever new is going to be there is going to, you know, serve our city. So I, I would also support this.
I also support this. I think this is really helpful and, and great. I think it's, it's nice to have something that's really clearly defined, that we can pull our map and walk to the building, and look at it, and look at the criteria. So I find that helpful, and I guess what you feel worth preserving is kind of like art and beauty. It's in the eye of the beholder, and for some of the buildings that, Buzz, you may not feel particularly enthused about, I, I look at them and say, "Wow, that's a great old building." It's like, that's, that's the character of Emeryville that I'd really like to be preserved. So I, I think this is a great list. I think it's helpful list. The criteria, criteria, I thought were very thoughtfully put together, so I definitely support this.
I mean, all buildings have an age to them, and they deteriorate, just like we do, and they have to be replaced, and it just is one more impediment to stopping it. Now, I agree, there's some extraordinary buildings in Emeryville that should be preserved and saved, but I think we've gone way past that in this criteria to save questionable buildings, just because you can interpret the criteria to cover them.
Well, I think there's another point to be made, which is, although, especially if, when there's buildings in a row that are together, it's, I guess what would be a good example would be Horton Street with the Zentner and the Harof, and I'm sorry, the Toll and the, there's a red industrial, and the, it, it kind of creates a district, so it has a feeling, and I, I guess although the entitlements of, for the Spa building and the one next to it, it's, it creates a whole sort of, an area. So I think although one building may not be as highly decorated or articulated as another, it, when they are specially, when they're in, together in an area, I think that, you know, that's important to, to take into account, so.
No, I would disagree with that, because those particular two buildings are just old rundown buildings, and one of them has a little arch in the entrance, which therefore makes it okay. Well, the city council's approved the demolition of it anyway, and I guess you can say, okay, they can approve just tearing down any of these that they wish to. they can approve just tearing down any of these that they wish to, but I would hope that we'd have a more carefully focused selection so that it wouldn't be easy to do. And, you know, we have the building down on, just down the street here, where a condominium went, up behind an old facade of brick, the Prometheus Project, that just looks silly. And, you know, I think it's things like that that we have to avoid.
So then, what would be, is it that it's predominantly brick? Is that the issue? And if it is, what, you know, what can be suggested to look at, say, predominantly brick and also has some other historical quality, such as there was a certain business type that was very relevant or originated in Emeryville that ties it to the history of Emeryville? So, I mean, I think there needs to be some thought about that as well, not just how old it is and whether it has these physical characteristics, but how does it link to Emeryville's history?
Well, all of these buildings were built for industrial use, and almost none of them currently have industrial use. So therefore, you know, how do you make that shift and make the building usable? You have a lot of empty buildings here.
I would like to point out that brick is one, definitely one of the criteria, but I don't believe it's every brick building in the city that's on this list. Every criterion has equal weight, and there's 11 criterion. It so happens that in Emeryville, most of the older significant buildings that meet these criteria are brick, but if you look down the list, you'll see there's maybe six or eight or 10 that are not brick, and they meet five or more of the other criteria. And I'm sure there are some buildings that are brick that, well, actually, if you look at the A through O, buildings that they drop off the list, if you, if we eliminate a couple of criteria, five of those are brick buildings, and they end up not being on the list. So it's not just brick.
I would move approval of the, I would move that we recommend approval of this ordinance.
I second that.
I had some additional comments, if I can, before we vote. I, I just, I understand kind of where Commissioner Cardoza is coming from. I have to keep reminding myself as I kind of look at this that, like, we're not, you know, we're not, this ordinance doesn't say you can't demolish these buildings, it just says you need a discretionary approval to demolish these buildings, which, so I think we're in adopting, you know, in recommending approval of this ordinance, we're relying on the wisdom of the city council, which I think is a, is an appropriate thing to do.
You get to make a recommendation to the council.
Are we, we still get to make a recommendation, so.
Yes.
But the criteria, I just, the criteria confuse me in that it gets us to where we want to be. If you, if you look at the pictures, you know, I think most of, most of these, most of those buildings are worthy of preservation, and the ones that aren't, I, you know, I think we can trust the city council to make that judgment, and we still get to recommend, and we still get to make a recommendation on that, this commission does. But just as I look at the criteria, and I want to, I actually, I want to commend staff on developing the criteria too, because I'm sure you put a lot of time into it, and I'm sure you looked at a lot of buildings, and it seems like you've developed something that works, and so I have to commend you, but I don't understand how it works. Because I just, I mean, you look at any one of these criteria, and it's just, you know, so there's window sills, so there's symmetry, so there's this, so there's that, and it somehow gets us to where we want to be, but it doesn't make any sense to me, so. And it's right, you know, it's frustrating to me, because it's right in front of me and I read it, and I don't, I just don't get how, how that gets us to where, to the endpoint, but...
May I make a suggestion, since Charlie looked up the Park Ave. Plan? If there were like a paragraph that was a little more descriptive narration, rather than a send an intern out and make sure they get the same answer I do list of specifics that sort of supports the photos in the list, would that make more sense?
I think so, if I understand what you're...
Are you talking about...
I have a motion on the floor to, sorry, to recommend this to city council, so I think we should...
I mean, you can still debate even when the, when the motion's on the floor, but if somebody wants to change it, they'd have to either ask for a friendly amendment or make a substitute motion.
Yeah, are you thinking of making a substitute motion?
I'm thinking of, I kind of want to understand what Diana was suggesting.
I think that just makes it more vague, going back in the opposite direction from where we're coming from. So I would prefer to see the criteria as they're in there. I think they're helpful, I think they give guidance, and we have a list of specific buildings, there's buildings on here that are already going to be demolished, there's buildings on here that have been demolished, and there's criteria for selecting buildings or, and I think it should go forward.
I guess what's just lacking to me is kind of, is kind of a narrative explaining the criteria. So here, you know, so this is how, you know, these are characteristics of industrial buildings of this era, and this is why, and, you know, I just, I don't know, when I just read these nine things, or whatever, we're at nine now, we've eliminated two, I think, you know, they're just not anything that I would, would say is, is that valuable until you, and even when you read them all together, they don't seem that valuable, but then when you look at the photos, it's the photos that really tie it all together for me. If I didn't have these photos with the, with the criteria, I would say this doesn't make any sense.
Well, I have a suggestion, maybe how we can get past this. I don't think it's appropriate to have a narrative kind of a description, as you describe, in the code. That just doesn't seem like the kind of thing you'd put in the code. And the Park Avenue District Plan is a little bit different, because that's a plan, it's a planned document that's full of narrative, as opposed to these regulations, which are part of the municipal code. But perhaps we could put that descriptive narrative that you're, I think would be very useful, in the staff report to the city council. It should have been in your staff report, and I apologize that it wasn't, but maybe we could put a similar kind of a narrative like that in the staff report, so that at least it makes it clear what this ordinance is trying to accomplish. And that way, you won't have to amend, you could pass Commissioner Donaldson's motion if you choose to do so without having to change anything.
I think that's a great idea, and I just want to comment on some of your observations, Sean, is that when I went out and looked at these buildings, I actually found this to be really helpful, and I actually, you know, sat there with a highlighter and looked at the building, and it's like, this gave me some way of judging it, and just like, is it, is it really, and it's like, I was actually kind of, actually surprised at how well it worked. So I, I do find it useful and helpful, and I kind of support Gail's comments that she made about it also.
Well, we have a motion on the floor and a second.
Are you ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Donaldson.
Aye.
Commissioner Moss.
Aye.
Commissioner Sherman.
Aye.
Commissioner Tan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Cardoza.
No.
And Chair Kummerly.
Aye.
Five ayes, one no. The motion is approved. We will forward your recommendation to the city council that this ordinance be adopted. Thank you.
Can I ask one real quick question of staff before we move on? Charlie, will this, will this, will the hearing to the city council also be noticed in the same way that the planning commission hearing was with a mailer to the property owners or no?
That was our intent. We could consider perhaps mailing them something a little more than just the agenda.
Yeah, I would just suggest a short cover letter or something to accompany the agenda.
Yeah, good idea.
That's a good idea, yeah, definitely. Well, thank you all for coming out. Are there any other comments? Congratulations, Gail, on your...
Yes, and thank you.
And with that, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.